I would love to call our regular Board of Education meeting to order. Before we do the pledge, I just want to take a moment. We had some Richmond Community Schools families had losses this past week. Longtime custodian, retired custodian Joan Smalley passed away. And Wendy Machewski, who works in our preschool program, lost her husband last weekend, last week. So if we could just keep those families in our thoughts and prayers in the days ahead, that would be appreciated. At this time, if we could rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our mission statement. Chris?
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. I'll go ahead and do your roll call. Kyle?
Here.
Tracy?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
David?
Here.
Sarah is absent with notice. I'm here. Margaret?
Here.
Do we have a quorum?
Thank you. Next is approval of the agenda. Before we make the motion, I just want to, item seven C, that item should not have been included in the packet for this evening. You received that information. I was to send an email. I didn't get the email out over the weekend, but that is going to be an agenda item in September. That was just to give everybody the information, enough time in advance to look at. So we're going to take that off tonight's agenda. So I would be looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Brian?
A couple of our hires, new hires, that are going to be with us tonight. First of all, Candace Chuteau is the secretary in the Special Education Department. She was approved at a previous board meeting but wasn't able to attend. So we'd like to introduce you to Candace. She actually started two weeks ago, the 7th of August.
Very good.
It's been well underway and nothing but good reviews that we've heard so far. So we're excited to have her as part of the team.
Very excited. Thank you.
Good. Good to have you. Welcome.
Amanda Martin is the English Social Studies teacher at the high school level. She will be taking over some of the ninth and 10th grade classes. Welcome, Amanda.
Excellent. Welcome.
Reen Shannon is the art. She will teach art at the high school as well as at the elementary school. Comes from us, from a couple of the districts that she's worked in. So we're looking, glad to have her as part of our team.
And as a Richmond alumni?
As a Richmond alumni.
Mm-hmm. Good. Excellent.
The other hired Douglas Montgomery was unable to be here tonight, but he is the criminal justice. Very excited to have as part of the team. He comes from, ex- from Texas. He's moved back to Michigan. He's got a video that he's already created to promote the program and has a lot of ideas to grow other programs in the district. So we see a lot of great things happening from him.
In your personnel report that I gave you, I put a copy in front of you. There was one deletion. Candace has accepted the position, declined, ended up declining position. So it will be repulsed. So in the packet, it's instructive to see his name stricken through.
I would like to say and thank some of the teachers. We have some resignations in our district. Just thank them for their years of service for the district. Anthony Boink, one of our teachers at the high school, resigned last week. He's actually going into the private industry. Krista Brown, a teacher at our middle school, resigned over the summer. She's actually moving closer to her family and where her husband teaches in Open County. Jessica McCosky, she was kindergarten teacher at Lee. She also is going to another teaching position in Chippewa Valley. Michelle Schomer, she's a teacher at middle school. She's actually got a really a great position in Romeo from a literacy coach perspective or a A-C-R-I, A-A-R-I, A-A-R-I, excuse me, position, which she is one of our teachers here. Kelly Teems, the secretary at the high school, is, resigned, is going into the private industry. And then we had a resignation from a food service over at Lee, Tammy Colmenti, which will shift around. So there's a couple that we've lost, but with that loss, we have some great new additions that are joining the team. We are looking very good from a staffing perspective. The other new hires you'll see in your packet is a lot of our coaches. Most of them are returning coaches. It is somewhat no longer beneficial for us to go to a third party, so we're bringing them in. They are hired through Richmond. So you'll see those coaches' names listed in our, in that new hire packet.
So all of the coaches are Richmond employees now?
All of our coaches will be Richmond employees, much like we did with transportation, bringing them back in-house as well as the food service. They're all brought back in-house.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions or comments? Okay. That being said, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our presentations, first reading of board policy with respect to student discipline.
We have several policies that are presented in the packet. Some of them were recently approved, but in working with our law firm, Truand Law, it is a recommendation to do a first reading on the student discipline policy, which is, there's about 13 pages. And basically, that would become the new 5600 student discipline policy. And the policies that are recommended for removal are all incorporated into the 5600 new policy. This policy, if you recall, August 1st, there was a law change in terms of how we suspend and look at suspension and expulsion. And here with us tonight is one of our attorneys, Jennifer Starlin, who is a, went to Richmond School.
Richmond grad?
Richmond grad.
Yeah.
If you want, just go up there. I asked her to come talk to you about the changes in the policy to give you the big picture overview, especially as it pertains to the new regulations on the law. Our administrators received some training today, and we will be scheduling training for all of our teaching staffs as well as the rest of staff.
All right. Thanks for having me here tonight. I actually had talked with Brian, and I know Robert Huber usually does your work, but myself and another attorney in the office are the ones who wrote this new student discipline policy and have been sort of taking the lead on everything related to the new student discipline laws. So Robert asked if I would come and talk to you guys tonight about this. And in talking to Brian, I saw your Neola policies, and I know that Neola is very comprehensive, but they do have six different policies for student discipline. And probably, I guess it was 2013, another attorney in the office and myself were asked by a district, hey, we just want one-stop shopping in terms of student discipline. We want an all-encompassing policy. We want draft resolutions, sample letters, everything. Can you do that for us? We did that for them. It took several months to put together, and then the finished product, with permission, we did market that to our other clients. Richmond bought that back in 2013. I think it was Linda Olson was the superintendent then, but our records had Richmond on there and purchased it again. Now, we had to significantly revise it now that the law has changed. So now you have the updated policy. So in talking with Brian last week, I said, you can repeal all of these policies and replace them with the draft policy that you've purchased from our firm. And with that comes, and I believe you have the entire packet in there, it's a whole lot of resolutions and letters, but also some of the things that we need to do under the new law. And the biggest change to the law, which was effective August 1st, and one of the many new things for this school year that came out of lame duck last year, is sort of the way we handle student discipline at every level. And it's, the legislature was really concerned with having an approach that focuses on keeping students in the classroom as much as possible, minimizing suspensions and expulsions. So to accomplish that, they didn't take anything out of the law. So your mandatory permanent expulsions are still in there. The weapons, the arson, the criminal sexual conduct, the physically assaulting staff members. Those are still mandatory permanent expulsions under the law. We still have the provision about student-to-student assault and requiring that we either suspend or expel, and the bomb threats requiring that we either suspend or expel. That's all still on there. But now, what the legislature has done is they came in and they said, okay, we're going to add a couple things. And these are these seven factors that schools need to consider before they suspend or expel any student. And if you look at those factors on an individual basis and determine suspensions not appropriate, expulsions not appropriate in this case based on these factors, or maybe expulsion's too harsh and we want to have a less significant penalty, if that's the case, then you as the board, and then the superintendent, and then your building level principals, have the discretion to not suspend for however many days, or permanently expelled from all schools in Michigan, or issue those long-term suspensions. You still can, and it probably will still be appropriate in some circumstances. But for all of those, there are now additional steps that need to be taken. So if you look at, in that packet, the first 13 pages are the actual board policy. And those cover general student discipline. They cover, this policy covers discipline of students with disabilities. It includes the due process procedures. It includes short-term suspensions. It includes long-term suspensions. So that can replace your policies 5600, 5605, 5610, 5610.01, 5610.02, and 5611. So those can all be removed, and then you can call it whatever number you want. I think Brian said 5600, but replace it with this policy that's in here. And then as you kind of keep going, I'll just quickly walk through what's in the packet, and then I'm going to circle back to the policy itself. I talked about the legislature is now requiring that schools consider certain factors before it takes disciplinary action against students. There's also a requirement that if challenged, we're able to prove that we considered these factors. So what we developed was a checklist that teachers, administrators, superintendent, or the board, as appropriate, can go through and say, yes, we've considered this. And some of the factors are the student's age, any disability, the student's disciplinary history, whether the misconduct threatened the safety of students or staff, whether there's any restorative practices that would better address the discipline, or that would be appropriate in addition to the discipline, and if there's a lesser intervention that would address the misconduct in question. So we've developed this form just to kind of have that documentation, so that if somebody ever challenges this, we can pull it out and say, yes, we've documented, we've considered all the factors. We've documented that. You can also see in the packet, there's some plug-and-play letters to go home to parents, notifying them, hey, this is the date and time of the board hearing or the superintendent hearing. There are all of the template resolutions. When you get further back, there are some, after a student is disciplined, sending the letter home. Yes, the board did decide to expel or suspend, or whatever the case may be. There is a reporting referral requirement to Community Mental Health or Department of Health and Human Services. That's been on the books for a long time. So that's just a template letter to use for that. And then there's also all of the reinstatement resolutions. So for students who were expelled from school, who are requesting to be reinstated, those resolutions are in here too. And then the template letters notifying the student and his or her parents about what the board decided on reinstatement. And then at the very back, there is hearing rights and procedures that just kind of lays out the entire process. So, and then I think actually on the hard copy on the back page, there's our student discipline checklist that's been updated. All of these comply with the requirements that went into play August 1st of this year. It's all up to date with the new law. We've checked and double-checked. My colleague and I have spent probably 100 hours developing, updating this policy. So we're very confident that it meets the requirements of the law. And we've found, and the feedback that we've gotten from clients, is that it's easy to use and it makes their jobs easier. They are able to say, okay, we've met all of these requirements. When you look at the policy itself, I'm back to the beginning here, the 13-page document, just a couple of things to point out. Another thing that the legislature did last year, and it was effective October 1st of 2016, and it kind of slid in under the radar, but they added a provision to the State School Aid Act that says schools are encouraged, it uses the word encouraged, to implement a plan to reduce expulsions and suspensions that exceed 10 days. It's a provision of the State School Aid Act, and it goes on to say that it's the legislative intent that districts that don't implement such a plan will be subject to forfeiture of a portion of its total state aid. It doesn't give a percentage. It's usually 5 or 10 percent. I haven't seen this enforced yet. It just went into place of October of last year. I don't know if, I haven't seen the advanced copy of the, this year's pupil accounting manual. I don't know if it will be addressed in there. But this board policy specifically addresses that, to make sure that you're covered. So if this policy's implemented, we've also met the requirements of the State School Aid Act provision. And that's that second paragraph that talks about, it's the board's policy that students should rarely be suspended or expelled from school, and that steps should be taken to minimize occurrences of suspension and expulsion. We go down a little bit further. There's a couple definitions to point out. With the new law, the legislature changed the definition of expulsion. An expulsion is now an exclusion from school for disciplinary reasons for 60 or more school days, and a suspension is less than 60 school days. So, you know, and I've talked to Brian about making sure that the handbook is clear when we're talking about an expulsion, that it actually means an expulsion as defined in the school code now. It also talks, this policy also covers snap suspensions. It talks about the restorative practices. It talks about the seven factors that we need to consider. And then it goes through the process for suspensions of 10 or fewer days, suspensions of less than 60 days, and expulsions. It includes all of the mandatory permanent expulsions and all of the other specific suspensions or expulsions that are referred to in the school code. It discusses reinstatement and lays out that process. Enrollment following misconduct at another school district, that's a question that we get a lot. You know, a student's suspended from school district A, now they want to come to school district B, and we're school district B. What do we do? So this specifically addresses that, so that there's a procedure in place and everybody understands what to do. It covers due process, direct staff on when they should be contacting law enforcement, includes the reporting requirements, and then addresses discipline of students with disabilities. So it's comprehensive, and we believe covers all of the student discipline scenarios. Obviously, we still need the student code of conduct, which will be a more detailed description of the types of misconduct that are going to be subject to discipline, but this is the board policy. So with that, I don't know if there are specific questions anybody has?
Just to add to that, regardless of the policy they have, we would have to do staff training on the law that took effect. So today, the administrators got an overview of that. We have tentatively scheduled September 11th, which is the first PV day after school starts for all the teaching staff, to offer their training to them, get them on board. What I love about this policy, rather than the multiple policy, is less errors, I believe, will happen because it's all in one, and it creates the process or the timeline to follow. It gives us the exact verbiage we need to say to parents in terms of how we notify them of a hearing, after the hearing. It gives the board the actual resolution to adopt after you have to make a decision. As Jennifer pointed out, there is a page right after the 13 pages is a checklist. As a team, this is what we're going to be using as we consider those factors to make sure that if we are challenged, we have the documentation that we have looked at those factors and options to minimize the amount of suspensions or expulsions, and only have to do them when they're absolutely necessary.
So then, my question was, this stuff, this will be like our packet as a board, when we have a hearing, that we follow exactly what this is, from starting the hearing, going into it, what are resolutions? We don't have to create our own resolutions?
Correct. All of the resolutions. And the link that Brian received, it allows you to download it. It's in Microsoft Word, and then it has just fillable places, and it tracks throughout. So when you put the student's name in one place, it will go through Mr. and Mrs. Smith. You don't have to keep typing it in. But yes, there are resolutions for all different types of offenses. And there's a lot of areas where it's, you know, remove if this doesn't apply, remove if this doesn't apply. So that'll allow you to go through that. And then it also has the appropriate letters that, before the board hearing, building administration or the superintendent should be sending.
And then is it, when it comes to the board, because we're talking about you have to make sure that you followed all your steps. So is that, when it comes to the board, the board knows all the steps have been followed, or it's an assumption when we're going to handle it, when it's our point, that everything has been done?
Yeah. That would be something that would be part of the conversation with administration. Okay, you know, the parents were notified of the date and time of the hearing, and all of the letters would be in there, and I would assume that, you know, those would be passed along, or representations would be made. Procedurally, it's not going to look a whole lot different than what you guys have already been doing. It just streamlines the process.
And I think it's important that the definition changes that the legislature's put in place. We have suspended students for 180 days, and in this case, it's no longer suspension. It's considered an expulsion.
And then, Brian, with respect to our, the code of conduct book, that will all be ready, that would have to be ready first day of school, right? Since, right? I'm assuming since it was August 1st, we'd have to make sure we've got everything in place?
Right. What I'm doing is going to go through the language where it gives a timeline and change it to the language that's in here, so it mimics the law that's required. So it's not necessarily, I don't anticipate changing the context of it. It's more of the timeline stuff that we could change.
And I had asked Brian this question when we were setting the agenda. When the law went into effect, August 1st, we're just, this is our first reading, we're doing it, and we'll approve it in two weeks. We're fine with, we haven't violated anything by just now, and, you know, it's after August 1st, and we're looking at this policy getting it in place?
Yes, you're fine. School hasn't started yet, so that's good. The only impact that would have if we didn't have it in place on day one of school would be to make sure that we're following the procedures under the law if there's a student who, you know, is suspended the first week of school, or something like that. But you're all right. It's just effective August 1st, but it's not really going to be effective until we're in school.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much. Moving on, athletic scoreboard donation. Mr. Reh, oh, here he comes.
Last fall and spring, there were a lot of issues with the scoreboard, the light bulbs lighting and burning out quickly. We were doing a lot of maintenance on the scoreboard. So I went and made a proposal to Tifa, and they have kindly accepted an amount of money to purchase a new scoreboard and installation for the school district.
So the piece that you have in your packet is, there's actually two issues that, as a board, I'm looking for your direction to accept them. One is the replacement of the scoreboard, which Mr. Reinhart spoke on, which was the original, I guess, starting point where this conversation began. As you said, this went to Tifa. Tifa had some discussions on it, and they have approved a purchase of a scoreboard for the vista, obviously pending the board's acceptance of the donation. The second aspect is advertising on the scoreboard. As part of the conversation, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, from your perspective, is, you know, there's a certain dollar amount that Tifa has approved. Obviously, Tifa funds get used for a lot of things in the city. And so part of the conversation was, could we have some advertising on that, or sponsorship might be a better word, to use on that scoreboard? Various organizations in our city that can have their logo or name on that scoreboard, and the revenue from that donation would help bring Tifa's costs down. That's the, and I included in your packet the letter that I received from City Manager John Moore regarding that. That was the conversation that Tifa had had at the table, as well as what we were presented, I think they approved it at the end of June, June 28th board meeting, and so forth. So we really, we have two issues. One, I don't, I don't think anybody, I don't want to speak for anybody, but we have the scoreboard issue, and then what are we going to do regarding the other logos on that scoreboard or advertising on that scoreboard? And that's really the packet you have. We have a couple mockups that where you could possibly, based on scoreboards. We're dealing with two different companies trying to figure out exact costs, because as of last Friday, we were sending them measurements between the poll to make sure they could install it under at least the amount that Tifa had granted or authorized up to. And so from the direction that I'm looking for the board is, if you want other logos on there, or other sponsorships that help reduce Tifa's costs, that needs to be decided or a direction needs to be given. I think in the letter that John had emailed me or put in the packet, you know, whether we have a Tifa board member or city council member represented from the school, and our board sit down, okay, who are the people that we want to have there? Because it would be a permanently fixed logo, and it would be there for the life of the scoreboard. Those are the two, kind of a conversation or direction that I'm looking for the board to give me.
Does anybody have any questions, or Chris, or Brian?
I forgot one. In talking with the company, we said, well, how soon, what's the process, the timeline that they're talking? If they were to have something this week in terms of a commitment to, yes, we're remitting the scoreboard, we are looking at the earliest it would be, would be the September 22nd football game that it would be installed. It takes, there's a four to six week lead time, and then once it's in, they install, they would install it, take down the old one and install the new one.
How would the companies be determined if we went that route? I mean, would it be a lottery? Would it be, I would imagine that people would want their logo on that?
Well, there's a couple. We can sit down and add, as the offer indicated from Tifa, and say, okay, let's sit down and say, who do we feel best represents the Tifa and the city and the school district? And reach out to those groups, whether it be the Lions Club, or the Rotary Club, or Athletic Boosters.
So it would be, it would be organizations, not businesses necessarily?
Well, your policy for advertising does allow for businesses. Because it's permanent, that would have to come to the board for approval, the actual what company. Now, you can delegate that if you wanted to. But for a permanent, the board policies, if it's permanent, the board's got to approve the company or the school, the logo, if you will. Basically, on the scoreboard, if you picture it, there's basically three panels. You have the main scoreboard. The panel above it could be the graphic that would have for anybody sponsoring it. That is a detail. We can just order the panel and have someone else install the graphics, so it doesn't hold up the production of it. up the production of it. We have several companies, the company that does our signs here, print all those graphics like that too, once we determine who would be on that scoreboard. And then the top panel would be just the name of the school district, and so forth. You could do a panel with the graphics, if we want to allow that to be as presenting the letter, and offsetting Tifa's costs, and the one, we could purchase the panel as a district. And I'm just using the one example that's in your board packet, it's again, it's a draft mockup, where you have two logos on it. You know, the original thought was that might be Tifa, slash the city, and some other sponsorships with it. We're not necessarily set to having three panels, it may just be two panels, depending on what we put on that panel in terms of advertising for the organizations that would be part of this.
So the donation from Tifa, this dollar amount, this, from this Nevco company, that fits into the donation from Tifa?
The donation?
That dollar amount?
The donation from Tifa, the twenty, up to, I think it's $20,000.
Right.
Is with the cost of a scoreboard and the installation, it fits in that.
Okay. So, okay. So then, so then the question then is, that's the donation with a Tifa logo, since Tifa's the one who is donating to us. So then, the idea behind putting all this advertisement is, Tifa's making the donation, but wants help now with the cost of it. So do we want to have advertising? That's the question.
But that's the question, is from the perspective of the Tifa, and I can speak just from the one group, the Lions, that have approached me, and I just broadly talked what we're talking about, I didn't even know we're doing this or not, I said, this is the concept that's being discussed. So the question would be, is if we have those other groups, and I'll just use the Lions Club as an example, and let's say they donate X dollars, that X dollars in what's being asked would come off Tifa's portion of the 20. So let's say, I'm picking this number out of the air, $2,000. Tifa would be roughly 18, and Lions 2,000, to create the total, if the board wanted to go in that direction, as presented here.
And then it would stay on there permanently?
That would be, that would be permanent, because those organizations would then be the ones that is sponsored, putting that scoreboard up there.
Right. I guess my only concern is if it ends up being businesses from year to year, or, you know, some go out of business, some...
I don't think, when I talked to the mayor and John, there wasn't businesses that they, that the conversation was at Tifa, it was service organization, the Lions, Rotary, the Athletic Boosters.
But then how do you, how do you say, you want to sit down and figure out who's going to be the organizations?
Well, if...
You know, by saying, this is the organization that we want, but we didn't think about this one, or we didn't, you know, that, I don't know.
Well, I guess where I'm, if the board wants to go down that road and add these other organizations to reduce Tifa's cost, then I would like, I would ask that, you give me the authority to sit down with John, and maybe it's a board member, and a board member from the city, say, okay, let's sit down, who are the groups that we want that represent both interests? And who are the groups that we want? Because there may be other groups out there that may want to have, you know, we want them, their logo on the scoreboard. In the rough design, you have about six groups that could put their logo on, being their three by three, three foot by three foot areas, from a distance to be able to at least see and recognize those groups that put the money towards the sponsorship. It doesn't have to be six, but when we were looking at the scale and the size, that's where we're at. So, and we got the, we got the request that they are committed to the scoreboard, and then we have the concept of, if we can get other organizations that both sides agree to, to help reduce the cost, if the board wants to go in that direction.
But if all of this has to be figured out by the end of the week in order for the board to get here, the school board to get here by September, whatever you said, 20 or something, but do all of those organizations have to commit by the end of this week in order for that timeframe to happen?
No, what I would, if that's the direction we go, I would recommend, we place the order with a blank panel, and we have another company that comes in and puts the sticker, if you will, or logo, on the blank panel, once we finalize that, because many of these organizations will have to probably take it back to their membership of clubs and vote, and it will take, it will take some time. So there is a potential that September 22nd meeting, there's some blank, blank areas, but we would put that on there, so it wouldn't hold up the process. The bigger question I got is the conversation about the logos on there, and what logos get decided on there.
And so potentially, if you're talking about that, it wouldn't necessarily have to be a permanent thing? Like what you were talking about?
If...
Right? I mean, if it's a, if it's a, if it's a, something that goes, can go up later, because it could come down later.
If you did, if you did something, if we thought we wanted to have advertising on it.
Right.
And that's, all that I'm saying is, when you, when you say you want to sit down, and you want, the two groups want to figure out who's the, that idea, that makes me crazy, because do you, you're saying that, okay, these are the three groups, because that's what these two think, but there could be other groups out there. But if you were looking, if we were looking that we wanted to advertise, and if you did a, whether it's a yearly, a yearly thing, or a two-year thing for whatever cost for so many dollars, yours goes up there for the year, that, that would be advertising, that would be money we would be generating?
From that, from that angle, yes. Go back to your point, if the dollars that you bring in from the other organization help reduce the overall cost, then that would become more of a permit, because those are the organizations that help sponsor that.
That made it happen, so.
Correct.
So if it's Tifa and five others, and when all the dust settles, and again, I'm just making this number out of the top of my head, Tifa's actual cost is 10,000, and the other five organizations put in, raise the other 10,000, that's, that'd be permanently up there, that they were... But if you're looking at a flexible advertising, in other words, you can go up there for a year, do I renew your kind, that's a different advertising, that possibility.
Well, I mean, around the table, is the idea of a donated scoreboard from Tifa, is that something that we are interested in having? I think that's the first question.
Around the table, yes, I would think so.
Right? I mean...
Correct.
Okay. So, we know that's something that we're grateful for, we're interested in, thank you very much. So then, comes in the advertising. Couple people are talking, everyone needs to talk. So what's the, what's the idea?
I guess, putting it all out there, we're talking about whether we are having people sponsor the scoreboard permanently, and using that money to offset Tifa's costs, or whether we're looking for a donated scoreboard, and then looking to profit ourselves as a district from yearly advertising. If it came down to that, just giving my opinion, I would say, that's a, I don't know if we need to make a profit off a gift necessarily.
I don't know for, I don't know for individuals of advertising.
Yeah, I don't even know if I, if I'm interested in advertising, yeah.
And there's other, there's other avenues for advertising as well.
Right.
So, you know, if we can make it a donation from charitable organizations that stay up there forever, I'm all for that. It's the city and the school working hand in hand, I think it's a great idea.
And if Brian tonight is looking for a direction as far as whether he should sit down with the city and hammer which organization should be involved, I trust that both he and the city can do that, without any needless anxiety on our parts, I guess, you know? I have confidence it can be done, and I'm not, again, looking to profit from a gift, I would just say thanks for the scoreboard.
How many individual sponsorships, places for sponsorships would there be?
Well, again, looking at that board, if you just did the one board with the Richmond, kind of, which is Blue Devils logo, you probably got enough for three or four names on there, depends if you want the logo. If you want to do a whole board, which is 18 feet by 6, and it's a panel, if you divide it equally, you could get up to six groups on there if you wanted to, maybe one group, you know, if you, if one group gave more, you could have their logo larger, if you wanted to just do it equally, based on your decision on what groups get up there.
Do you get a sense that there's six or seven groups?
I would say six would be what the most you'd want to put on it, if you want them to have their logo side, because being able to see it from the stand across the field, you know, it's a three foot by three foot area. I would say six would be, you probably could squeeze in seven, if you wanted to get more groups to have options, to be part of this, and reduce the cost. You know, if there's only two, it could all, it may only be two groups.
Do you get a sense of what community groups are interested in pursuing this? Do you have five or six that have said, we want to get in?
I haven't discussed that, I can, I can give a sense from the Lions Club, there's an interest there. They did, you know, like I said, they asked me to talk, talk very general about it, here's where we're going, up, more information, the new president, Vance, who was just sworn as president, asked me to speak in their July meeting. So I talked to them, here's where, what was proposed, more information coming. They were looking for how much it would cost, see what they could budget, that was really what they were focusing on. But there is an interest on the Lions Club. I think the Rotary was other one, I have not talked to anybody, the Rotary hasn't been approached, maybe, and the Athletic Boosters, I'm trying to think, those are the three groups that I... And the mayor and I have talked about a month ago, Ben, and John and I have been talking, trying to work this through in terms of understanding, because from a board level, we have two issues. We got the acceptance of the donation, which is one policy, and then, on a district item, do you want sponsorships? And just to recap, your policy that was approved, permanent sponsorships are approved by the board, or you could delegate that. Temporary sponsorship, like the fencing that we have, is done through the athletic director, or the student students, and myself, but those typically benefit an organization, they don't, none of that revenue comes to the school. Other than Coca-Cola, that's the only sponsorship that we have in the district, that we receive some type of check from a company. All the others go right to the organization, 501(c)(3), et cetera.
So it seems like moving forward with the sponsorship idea with representation from the Tifa board, and Brian is the direction that we need to move with?
I think that sounds like a great idea.
So is it safe to assume that you are going to accept the definition with this conversation within the term, so that we can issue the PO, if you will, and we can work on the panel?
I would say yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, then I will, we'll be in touch.
Okay.
So, I want to thank Tifa and the city, this is a very generous donation, and so this is very much appreciated of all it.
Thank you very much.
And we look forward to the finished product of this. Thank you.
It's going to be great.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhart. Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Just one last thing, I do want to give credit to Mr. Reinhart, he is, he is, he's got a lot of energy. He is constantly looking for ways to improve the school, the athletic, and since he's joined our team, he's been an asset, so he really spearheaded looking at the needs of the district, and seeing, you know, if we can get a scoreboard, and reach out, so I want to thank him for his hard work, because he spent a lot of hours on it, so I appreciate that, Mr. Reinhart.
Moving on, public comments, portion of our meeting where if anyone in the audience would like to address the board, they can do so. You have three minutes, it is not a question and answer period, but if you do have a question that you need an answer to, there's a card up on the podium, someone will get back with you. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? No? Okay. Moving on, superintendent and legislative update. Brian?
Well, there's not a whole lot in the legislative, they've been on recess, which is a good thing. So we are, right now, in the process of staffing, as you, with the personnel report, we've had some resignations, and we're filling them, and we're doing a great job, I want to thank my team for their work, because they have been in contact with me all summer, even when they've been off, we've been communicating. The buildings, as of today, are officially, the summer cleaning is done, now we're doing spot cleaning and last minute cleaning, so I want to give kudos to DM Berg Group, because under Dar Bolinger, her supervisor, they spent hours, and there's a new level of standard or coherent credit to Dar, as she expects, so they did a great job, so I want to appreciate that. You'll see a lot of things still going on in the district, you'll see some of the striping has already been done at the elementary school and middle school for the parking lot striping, high school will get done tomorrow. We've got the last of the, if you remember our audit that we had with our handicap signs, and when they came in a couple of years ago, and we had to put a plan together to be in compliance with that. We got a couple more signs, the high school parking lot signs, the middle school handicap signs, and the elementary are being replaced tomorrow. There's a couple signs that we had to put on the buildings notifying handicap entrances. The middle school's put up, there's one on the elementary school now, there's one on the doors, you're coming from the parking lot of students, and say we're the main entrance. So that's being complete, we have been very busy, so the buildings look great. For the listening audience, the week, next week, sometime, you'll receive a letter from the building principal, welcoming them back to school. It will talk about the Blue Devil Days, on Monday, August 28th will be, excuse me, yeah, Monday, August 28th will be the High School Blue Devil Days, it's from 5:00 to 8:00 at night, and they might be different, in the letter will say when groups come. Middle school is on August 29th, which is Tuesday, from again, 5:00 to 8:00, and the elementary is on Wednesday, August 30th. Prior to that, from 4:30 to 5:30, we will have a new families dinner, as we've been doing the last couple of years. You'll get another invite for the board, but you are welcome to meet our new families. We have had a steady stream of registrations, the numbers look very good. So, knock on wood, we're now in the process of, we've got requests from records, we're going through that. I want to give a thanks to the special, or special, the REA, and the leadership and the teachers that met with us in June. You'll see a lot of the advertising, we have a billboard that was up, they did a lot of calls to parents to see if they were coming back. We have a lawn sign that we've been distributing throughout, letting people know they choose Richmond and why. And then we're going to do a campaign throughout the school year with staff and students, all staff, of, maybe they're picturing a little more of a quote, that why they, they choose Richmond to teach at or work at. So that'll be our next phase. So I have signs here for the board members, I brought two for everybody, if you want more, I have more. We have, we've been distributing, we'll distribute them at Blue Devil Days. Actually, the design, I want to give credits to Mrs. Nolan at the middle school, sat at that meeting and drafted something like that, and that was her design, and she is, I talked to her today, she's extremely excited that what she drew is...
All her talent.
Especially when she saw it on the billboard on that grass, so I want to give Mrs. Nolan credit for that, because there's a lot of people did it, but her artistic, with that, so. With that, we are ready for school.
Excellent. Next, items of interest from members of the board. Does anyone have anything? Haley, do you want to say anything about your trip, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
I went to Chicago for three weeks in June, and the first week in July, and I learned a lot. I got my butt kicked a little bit, actually. I learned what it was like to get a B minus on a paper. It was kind of hard, but...
You survived.
I did, I survived. It was awesome. I had two professors, actually. One used to teach at Princeton, and now she teaches at the University of Chicago, really tough. But I did, I learned a lot, and I ended up my last paper, I went from B minus on my first paper to an A minus on the last one, so. But I met a lot of people, too, that was one of the coolest things. I tried to talk to everyone, but I ended up, I had like a group of probably 15 close friends, and in all different classes, there was a class there, it was like a pre-law class, there was a pre-med class, and then other classes similar to the philosophy type course I took. And I made friends from Brazil, Mexico, India, that like I still keep in contact every day, we have group chat. And my roommate was actually from Shanghai, China, so it was really cool. We both, we learned a lot about each other and our different cultures and whatnot, so I learned a lot of stuff.
Good, that's great.
Very nice.
Great. Anybody else?
Just wanted to echo what Brian said, this summer, we were parking cars, the athletics department was parking cars, mostly Mr. Reinhart was parking cars, and I believe he was there seven straight days from sunup to after sundown, and I just want to thank you for your time and all of your effort that week, because it was challenging. So thank you.
And truly, again, to echo what Brian said, Mrs. Ranger's the only one sitting here tonight, but that group that sat down and met... tonight, but that group that sat down and met that day, really cool ideas came. And so, it's exciting to see that. That billboard is great and it is exciting to be driving around town and see these signs popping up all over the place. And the phone calls and all that, that thing, that stuff we've talked about, we need to do. So, we are grateful for the group that took their summertime to come in and do it. So, again, thank you, guys. I mean, it's, all it's going to do is make us better and that's what we're here for. So, we appreciate that. Good? Okay. Action items. Contract for eSpark learning.
We currently use eSpark for our Title I program as well as we purchased a portion of the licenses through General Fund to support our accelerated students at the elementary school. It's one tool that we use with the accelerated as the, Mr. Koshin and Mrs. Napier worked with Mrs. Rappier last, Rappier who was, coordinates the accelerated portion. They have actually evolved from eSparks as a starting point and for our third and fourth grade evolved to using the literacy library because we had a lot more, we had students that were exceeding what eSparks could offer. But it is a software that we can identify where the students are at. It targets specific strands of areas where they need to improve on and we can target that instruction, especially that supplemental support. So, before we use the request to continue using eSparks, the total dollar amount and portion of that is through, 150 licenses is through Title I funds and the remaining 50 licenses are through General Fund.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the license renewal for eSpark learning platform for which funding from the 2017-18 General Fund and 2017-18 Title I budget is authorized for a total not to exceed $20,700 as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
Is it, Kyle? Okay. It has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
I just have, I did put in my newsletter, there was a question that Mrs. Board Member Gillis had. It's really a fluid document, it's a starting point we use. And if we need to bring in other resources, we will do that based on the instructional decision-making of the staff involved, so.
I will do a roll call. Tracy?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Next is motion, we need a motion to change our August 28th Board of Education meeting location. We have the Blue Devil Days here at the high school that day. And in the beginning of the year, when we set our meeting dates, we have that motion and we set when they are and it's done. So, Brian would like to move us to a different spot to go to Lee School. So, we would need a motion to do that since we've already set our meeting dates and times. So, so that we're not in the middle of high school Blue Devil Days, looking for a motion to change our meeting place to Lee School on August 28th.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and change the August 28th, 2017 Board of Education meeting location to the media center at Will L.L.E. Elementary Media Center.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. And we are adjourned at 7:53.